Things from the agreement. Steve, you there?
Can you hear? Can you hear people in the room? I don't know if that helps.
We go with everything and we hand it off to Cindy, and Steve called them, and it was an issue with Unitil trying to figure out the paperwork. In the course of everything, when Unitil first agreed to everything, there was a question of there was 33 what's called yard lights. Basically, it is a light up on a telephone pole with nothing else. And they can't convert those to LED. It has to have the street lights be on, and then they take off the street light to put on the LED. So we have 33 of those, and it's a cost of $700 each, I think, Steve? Saying, shake his head yes. Which originally was wrapped into everything that we talked about. And since we last discussed, when Unitil came, they had come back and saying, "Time out." The whole LED lighting is based on a federal grant. We can't include those, the cost of those items, in it.
Which is contrary to what you told us at the time.
Correct. And we'll talk about that in a sec, okay? The short term is, like the Affinity contract, basically, we would have to cut them a check for roughly $17,000 to do the work. Unitil would give us a rebate within three months of like $19,000. Okay, so we're floating money for like a three-month period before Unitil, and Cindy will have all that paperwork, okay? But there's the cost for these mass dollars. And Unitil is what they're trying to be nice. They're willing to incorporate that cost in-
Which is?
$33,000. Yep.
So it's $56,000.
No, it's 17 plus 22 is 39.
39.
39, yep.
That's the bill that we have.
Right. So Unitil's offering is-
The unit is 33, 893, is that it?
Yep. So Unitil's offering to take that $22,000 cost and finance it 0% over five years. Okay? That's what they're offering to do to help us. We can go back and we can push back onto Unitil and say, "Wait a minute. When Affinity first sent you the package, you agreed to it and said it was good. And to be honest, we can't convert the streetlights, I mean LED lights, without these items, so it is a factor. But here and there, we've got to figure out a way to, if we want to do it, we've got to figure out that part. It's the $17,000 to Affinity, and like I said, Unitil will come back in three months and give us the $19,000 rebate.
They're not going to change their mind on that?
No. Well, he has the paperwork. That's what he forwarded to us and Cindy. We have the paperwork. The short problem is the $22,000, whether we push back on them or just refinance that over the next five years through Unitil. What do you think?
So what's this bill for 33, 893 to Affinity?
Go ahead.
$18,000.
Yeah, I guess my concern, I didn't open it up till just now, I looked, because you sent me a couple emails today, and I assumed that was the new updated figures, but it's not. It's just the email from Unitil, Nunes at Unitil saying that it's up, it's a go. The figures that we have in front of us are still from March 30th. So- The contract from Unitil, to see. But if I'm hearing you correct, out the door, it's the $17,000 cost. Other than that, everything else is being handled by Unitil.
Well, these light fixtures had issues with the regulatory federal government, and so they let them do that to 16, and we don't.
I apologize, but I mean, Susan reached out to you, and you talked with Susan last week, and I know you talked with me. I got the emails, I just looked today, and I didn't realize. I assumed they were going to be in my selection packet that you sent them to Susan, you didn't. I just forwarded it to Susan now. The update- Susan, so she could have distributed. I know I had them, but I thought Susan already had them, and she didn't. So we're all looking at figures that are dated March, and those aren't accurate. So I just sent them now to Susan. She can send them to Cindy and everyone else, and then we can have them. But I didn't realize you didn't send them to Susan, who you talked to. Oh, I apologize too. I thought the whole board got it, when you talked to Susan and you got on the agenda. It has the old numbers, so that's why everyone's kind of scratching their head, but-
I recommended that we have them and Tim Nunes back here, all in the same room at the same time. Because what I was told today by Unitil, what we're going to be paying for the old streetlights out here, we probably should have a chat about that. What you're going to be paying for them to come take the old streetlights down, and what we have to pay based upon the depreciation on those lights is going to be considerable.
Yeah, it's $683 each one.
But I think what Don is saying, and what this gentleman already inferred, there's another additional cost that's not figured in here. And it's very hard, I mean-
Plus, there's-
If you guys have spent $56,000 on a good word, I don't think so.
Yeah.
So there's other factors to consider too. So even when the new lights go up, we have to figure out who's going to install them, who's going to maintain them. Because if we call Unitil to come out and maintain those lights after they die, when we put the new ones up, we have to pay Unitil to come maintain them because they're no longer their lights.
No, it's theirs for a 10-year period.
Okay.
And that's-
After the five-year payoff?
Yeah. Those lights are guaranteed, I believe. Steve can answer that. It's a 10-year- The best thing to do would be to get, no Zoom, have you and Tim Nunes come in, and together, and we'll have our finance director here as well, and iron it out once and for all with everything in front of us and all the people in the room.
Yeah. That's my sense.
I ask you to coordinate with Tim at Unitil and Susan to get on the agenda where you can come in person. I think-
Work ahead of time.
Yes.
Chief Pellerin?
Yes, sir.
Here to talk about ambulance billing.
You need to charge more?
Nice ask, guy.
What's that?
Nice ask, guy.
Thank you. Ah, so there's five copies there. So, um, I received an email from, good evening, by the way. I received an email from Laura and the finance director at Exeter Hospital. So this is basically the contract that Bill Seadot signed years and years ago for Exeter Hospital ALS. So for those who don't know, ALS is a paramedic service that comes from the hospital. And any serious call, we code them as Charlie Delta Echo calls, heart attacks, difficulty breathing, strokes, all that stuff. They send two paramedics if they're available, and they cover Kinston East, Kingston Deerfield, Raymond, Peping. So the way the past regime has done it is that we, they charge us $67 for every transport. If we cancel them on scene, or if we cancel them before they even leave the hospital because Steve Turner is on for us and he's a paramedic, once we get on scene and evaluate the patient and say, "It was really stubbed toe on a stroke," then we cancel it out. If they transport with us, they do not, according to this contract and past practice, they do not bill Medicare or insurance companies. They bill us directly for their service. They bill us 60-
744.
67 and change, um, so every time they transport. As I stated, the past regime would wait until we got reimbursed from the transports, Medicare, or insurance to pay Exeter Hospital. But after leaving this contract, it's not that way in the contract. So we have, if you go to 423, which is on page three of the contract, they will invoice us on a monthly basis. Town shall be expected to pay within 90 days of the day the hospital's invoiced. However, if payment is received within 45 days, a 2% prompt pay discount will be sent. So our most outstanding, uh- So, uh, our most outstanding, uh, invoice is from December of last year, uh, so I guess that's, tell it to you guys, I don't think that's acceptable because they says their terms, they can drop us within 90 days, not that they would, uh, they haven't mentioned that, I'm just saying that's in the contract.
So this is, this is the actual contract that has been in place?
Yes.
That's signed.
So this, this is, this is a copy of the contract that they give to every town. Currently, Bill Seaman's signature is on it. Uh, I've requested a new contract for myself to sign, uh, but their contract person, writing person, uh, is COVID is messing it up, so as soon as, if you're in agreements with this contract, um, and really it's just the payment of 90 days that is my concern.
So this, is this something that's reimbursable for a charge to the patient?
Yes, so when we bill, we bill at different rates, you know, we adopted rates last year to ALS, uh, BLS, ALS II, um, so like here, for a regular ALS call, they charge 67 and change, and then I think for an ALS II call, they charge 300 and something, um, but that's all, that adds on to what we can bill them, bill the insurance company or Medicare.
So we're paid for it, we bill it out?
Yes.
And so this is just a reimbursement for what we bill out?
Right.
So what's the question?
So I would like your permission, and if possibly one of you could talk to Cindy about paying this within 90 days as stated in the contract, as opposed to waiting several months until we get reimbursed to pay it.
So how does she know how much we owe Exeter Hospital, they send us a bill?
They send us a bill.
And how often, every 30 days?
Uh, yeah, every, every month. So we have, uh, I don't have a copy of the invoice that they sent me, but we have probably eight outstanding invoices for the $67 dating back to December of last year, a couple in March.
Really? How come?
So I wouldn't, why, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we, if we're paying it out, why wouldn't we sign it here? So why don't we funnel it through like a regular purchase or seeing it's payable?
Uh, I don't see the bills, they usually go directly to Cindy.
And what Cindy was doing, was Cindy was waiting for the insurance money, what's, because there's some insurances that don't pay.
Correct, sometimes we each-
So it might end up-
But we have to pay it anyways.
Correct, under the terms of the contract, you knew, Cindy waited to pay until she got the money.
Okay, alright.
So I would mention, say, eight out of 10 times, or nine out of 10 times, we get reimbursed by-
Well, we're obligated, if we have a contract, to pay it. The town pays its bills, and if we have a contract, we need to pay our bills within the timeframe.
I had talked to Cindy, and she just wanted clarification from the board.
The town pays its bills.
Done.
Yeah, we're supposed to pay it within that time period, and we've signed an agreement, a contract, we should do it.
Uh, the other thing I just wanna note, I know you guys have been working or in, uh, talks with a computer company for networking purposes, uh, so we've got a couple, uh, couple messages on our computer, server issues and whatever, so I'm talking to the school department, but, uh, I emailed the school department, uh, a week and a half ago, and they're tied up doing their remote learning, getting all their computers in, so they haven't been in, so I don't expect anything from the board, just giving you a heads up that we need to get something done sooner than later.
Did you hear something? Yep, I heard from him today, got an email, and I told him I was gonna speak to all the department heads to set up a time that he could come talk to all of us, and to come look at what everybody has for equipment and how it's gonna work in that department. So I just-
Who's he, the school guy?
The guy we voted to have-
Block five.
Block five.
Oh, yeah.
He was on vacation last week when I spoke to the owner, uh, and he sent me the email today, so I'll be getting hold of everyone tomorrow to pick a date that works for everyone.
Uh, the last thing, I know I brought it up, um, and I don't know if this is the right form, I guess, but, uh, I brought up possibly per diem's time and a half for holiday pay. Um, I, I know there was a lot of positive feedback on that, but I didn't know if I was okay to do it.
Who was that?
We, actually, we never did discuss it, we mentioned it, about holidays, he's having a hard time getting people, obviously, full-time is cap to work, but the per diem people, they, who wants more Thanksgiving, it's straight pay, so he's having a hard time getting for the holidays, the major holidays, he's having trouble getting people to work.
Who's got the laws in town? Just get those guys.
We'll send them yours first, how's that sound?
So we never, actually, we never discussed it after he brought it to our attention, but we never discussed it.
Right, you got a holiday coming up?
Uh, so we have Labor Day coming up, the only three left this year, I believe, are Labor Day-
Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And you said it would be all the town-recognized holidays, correct?
Yes, so there's 10 town-recognized holidays, and it would just be those.
So let me ask you this, and this kind of back, is back into the billing, is this turning into a self-sustaining entity, the per diem, and, or is-
Uh, so, as of right now, I don't believe we've missed one shift of per diems.
I think he's asking revenue.
Well, that's part of it, but I mean, the revenue, is that driving support of that, or?
Uh-
Like, is, is the revenue that we're bringing in from the ambulance by making all these calls and not having farm calls out to other towns, is that-
I, I will look that up, I'm not sure. We, we are down in calls, obviously, because of COVID, um, for this year, but, um-
So that would have an impact.
So what's it, what's it gonna cost on an average, do you, just a rough idea?
Uh, so, uh, the rough numbers I did today for my budget was-
For per diem?
So if you gave them time and a half, so they make $15 an hour, so you pay them $22.50, uh, it was like $2,000.
So how much for per diem? So how much a year are we paying for per diem people?
Total?
Yeah.
Uh, 133,000.
How much?
133.
For per diem? And what's, what's our average revenue for ambulance?
Like 240 on the annual bill?
Uh, for the past years, like I said, it may be down this year because of COVID.
Between 2 and 240 revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it still covers you?
Yeah.
And if it's down?
And I'm only asking, it's just because if this is driving that revenue, or, I mean, we're providing a more complete service because of that, I think it's a worthwhile investment to continue.
Yeah.
And I will say, it, I don't foresee it happening for a while, Hampstead's been doing per diems for eight years now, um, but because the per diem is the cheapest cost, I think that's why you guys are the cheapest solution, as opposed to a private ambulance company that's gonna charge you for a paramedic ambulance, or for new full-timers, which would allow us to run a full-time schedule, um, like, you know, Hampstead's still doing it, East Kingston does it, Kensington, Hampton Falls, there's a lot of areas, so I don't foresee it in the immediate future, but at some point, you know, it, it's gonna be a cost-driven thing, meaning, well, hey, I'm gonna go work at Hampstead for a shift because they pay $23 an hour, and Kingston only pays 15, um, but, so, but the holiday thing basically comes down to, you know, nobody wants to sign up on Christmas Day for-
And, and is money in your budget to sustain, you don't have a budget on it, the per diem?
For the remainder of the year, I definitely have enough money, and, uh, next year, out of 135,000, I may go up $1,000 just to cover that, um, plus, we didn't, we didn't have any paramedics, uh, the pay rate for a paramedic is $16 an hour, uh, we didn't have any paramedics that signed up this year for per diem, um, but I, I need to ensure that there's money in the budget for that if that happens, but-
I would say we should do it. I can tell you that the service that, that's being provided now, I don't think there's been any calls that an ambulance hasn't rolled out to. Am I correct?
Yep, and there's several calls, we had a fire call, a firearm activation today, and then, uh, Exeter had a two-car NVA, they called for ambulance, as soon as we cleared the motor vehicle accident, I offered our ambulance up, so we're not, we're not going mutually a whole lot, again, I mean, all calls are down because of COVID, traffic's down, ambulance calls down, but we're definitely staffing a lot better than the past few years.
So, and obviously it's down, but are we being reimbursed for those mutually calls?
Uh, if we transport the patient, then we bill the patient, and otherwise.
But was before-
A question of concern.
Yeah, we're not going as much to the town to the north as much anymore.
Correct.
Because they have more people, is that correct?
Uh, so, Brantwood has actually gone to, uh, seven days a week, full-time coverage. They work, our old schedule was, uh, they have two people in house, six to six.
Okay, yeah, I agree with the chief, I think, you know, it's working, let's invest in it and keep it going, and I think-
Can we motion to that effect for the town?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, as you're evaluating this, and this isn't pushing you to do it in the next year, but just be aware of what per diem guys are making, and other-
Yeah, so Hampstead, and, and kind of the driving force, this was Hampstead just did a survey of area fire chiefs, per diem members, call members, uh, and then they gave all the towns that participated the results, and like I said, uh, I know Nunes is paying, you know, $17 an hour, Hampstead's up there, you know, we're all in, in the realm of $15 to $18 an hour, um, and I think because we offer 24-hour shifts, um, that's appealing to a lot of people that work other jobs, but-
The other thing I'll tell you, by hiring per diem people, we're not paying benefits, retirement, all of that stuff, that's very costly to hire a full-time employee, so we're certainly getting the bigger bang for the buck with the per diem people.
Well, I would think people who wanna come work for Kingston, that the rest of the fire chiefs that's there, you know, that alone is a, the legend, self-porter.
The legend?
I haven't heard that.
I haven't heard any stories, there's nothing missing out.
Can't wait to hear that story. I will- On the new fire station, because they busted at the seams, because it was taken over for storage, so that's definitely a-
Don't be looking at me, that's not my fault.
Someone's gotta make this, the motion.
Okay, I'll move that we authorize the chief to pay town and a half for holidays, on the town, spot, town-recognized holidays for the per diem staff.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Oh, Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Yes.
Sages.
Yes. And are we gonna be okay with Susan talking to Cindy about the billing, or does one of us have to talk to Cindy, just so we can move this forward?
Do we ask her if we have to do it? So there's any question about what, how it's gonna happen, or what needs to be done, so you can communicate back with Exeter Hospital or the paramedics? I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, just so Cindy gets a message, we fix it.
I mean, I'm just assuming as though every other town that signs the same agreement is they're paying their bills on time, right?
So we need to-
This isn't the first time that they've sent us overdue notices, so-
Yeah, let's stop that, let's stop that stuff.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, at this point in the meeting, we are open for public comment.
Anybody on Zoom?
Just one. See any, nope.
Okay, moving forward. Uh, whole business, so there was a question that came up, and I deferred to the board, um, because it has changed multiple times when it's come before this board, and it's not a clear directive, uh, so there, the, we need to give guidance as to what the permit fee schedule is for the school, because we've charged, we've not charged, we've taken the money, and then we're gonna give it back when the project's done, I think we need to have a clear directive on this, and I think it needs to be something that's voted on, and I've made my position on this clear, so I felt it was for the board to decide as a whole.
I thought we said on large projects that had a large amount of cost to us, that we were gonna look at it differently than the small projects, isn't that what we discussed last time? I think when they built a new school, the new high school-
Yeah.
-we addressed that differently, if I'm not mistaken, that because our inspectors had to go there a number of times for a number of different issues, that there was a cost impact to us, on our budgets, on, because some of the people paid for the price of the, um, permit itself, is that correct?
Yeah, I-
I, that gets too complicated, I think we need to look at the bigger issue, do we want them to apply for permits so that we can expect the jobs to ensure that they're done correctly?
Well, they shouldn't be pulling a permit anyway.
Okay, so they shouldn't-
That's number one.
Alright, okay.
They shouldn't, I, I would think for, for insurance purposes and public safety purposes, that you need to pull a permit.
You would think, yes.
Okay, so I think that needs to happen, because I don't think, if something happens there and it's not been inspected by an inspector, and we already have that process, that could be an issue, liability-wise.
Yes.
Correct.
So I would suggest we have a permit process anyway, but I know in the past what's happened with large projects that we've, I mean, if you're talking about hanging a light over here somewhere that it's a, a two-minute thing, although the electrical inspector's paced, uh, paid based upon-
He's paid per inspection.
Per inspection.
And, I, I guess some background on this is, we've had a lot of issues having to chase things down at the school, and, I think walls being closed up, and, my personal feeling on it, beyond outside influences, if someone's following the inspection process, the permitting process, as any other applicant would, we would have a frame of recourse if they didn't do it the proper way. The problem with the school is when we're extending freebies and, you know, things aren't getting covered, what's happened is it's kinda like, oh, hey, we finished that, and the walls are all covered, and now there's laptop charting stays mounted on the wall, and our electrical inspector hasn't been able to view how it is in there. I'm not opposed to refunding a portion of the price back to them after we cover our inspection fees, but I think we need to cover the town's cost basis in it, at least.
Correct, if I'm wrong, the other difference was, like, Robert Stewart theoretically is paid whether he inspects or doesn't inspect, okay, he's a set stat, so we kinda said, he's here anyways, he can go inspect it, whereas the plumbing and the electrical inspector get paid per inspection, so there's no reason for the town to cover their costs for that, you know, we have to charge the school for that because it's, it's an actual cost, and I thought that's where the dividing was, if there was a plumbing or electrical inspector, they had to pay, the building inspector, we were kinda like, okay, these are-
He's on payroll anyways.
Right, and I think-
That's why we decided to refund just the electrical and plumbing on that large plumbing-
Yeah.
Or, yeah, the other thing.
So we should set a deposit going forward from this date forward?
Yes, yes.
That all permits will be applied for per normal procedure?
Yep.
That when it's, when, and you wanna list the two specific ones, that plumbing and electrical are the only two that are per job fees?
Gas. Well, they're technically per diem employees, but I don't think we're singling out the school, I think there's gonna have to be inspections on that fire station, and if, for nothing else, just for accounting purposes, we need to track where that money goes.
Yeah.
So you've got plumbing, electrical, gas?
Uh, the, plumbing does gas.
He does gas.
And, and the fire.
So it's really the plumbing and electrical inspectors?
Yes.
So, fees for-
So-
Other than plumbing and electrical, fees will be waived? Fees will be waived for our, for the school district and municipal buildings?
I mean, I hate to say it, but even like, you brought about the fire station, we can't expect Tom, an unplumbing inspector, to go and inspect at the free, even though it's a town building, maybe I need to pay for it.
We're not saying that, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I'm saying it's part of the policy, though, that we're living by it.
Yeah, that's how they're paid.
So are you saying you'll waive the building inspection fee, but have them pay for the plumbing and electrical?
Health, health and building, we pay them-
And fire.
And fire, you're right, fire, those three things, we don't charge them for, but we have to charge them.
With plumbing and electrical.
Plumbing and electrical. I think that's fair, don't you?
It's gonna be from municipal buildings or the school.
And/or the school, yeah.
Yeah, any size project.
And they shall pull a permit on everything.
They, they, I think they will.
Well, they have some-
Well, we, yeah, we've not gotten this before without having a permit, yeah.
And, to the school's credit, I think we're past that now.
Yep.
We opened up a line of communication, and I think we're at a point where they understand what they need to pull permits for, so I think we're past that point, but I, I just think we need to cover the town for contract employees.
And in the office, we just-
Can I throw a wrench in the system?
Oh, please.
Because we're talking about changing the fee structure anyways, okay, like, right now, the money goes directly to them, there's no money made on it, right? If we change it to a point where the plumbing and electrical inspector go higher, you know, theoretically, the idea was make some money off it to offset some of the other stuff, are we gonna change the policy for them at that point?
I don't think so, because I think we are, when their fee goes higher, it's nothing, still nothing would come to the town, it's being in, we're still gonna be, even if we went to $50 an inspection, we would still be lagging behind other towns.
Yeah.
So I think-
Please, it's too big.
Okay, I just wanna check.
Yeah, it's-
I don't wanna revisit this again because-
I'll throw, I'll throw a monkey wrench in, we're going to have, I'm sure Mr. Schubert's going to ask for rebate some of those fees, if we have a policy that says the building and health can be waived, but not the plumbing and electrical. You know, I mean, I'm just throwing that out as an example.
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
Because he's going to ask for those fees, isn't.
Although, actually, I specifically asked him, he said impact, and he said, because I specifically, I.
But that's something that we need to discuss at a later time.
But actually, anyways, but is that, do we want to make a motion that way?
I don't.
Or is that, I think that's in line with what we voted previously?
For that one project, and now smaller projects are coming in saying, oh, no, we don't have to pay, and so there's a lot of confusion.
Who's bringing in small part of the schools?
Well, I would say that any, there's a cost associated with it.
They still have to do their total permit, except there's no fees.
For electrical and plumbing?
No, those are the other ones, there is a fee.
Do it back.
I'll make a motion that from this point forward, the school district will only be charged.
And municipal buildings.
Or any municipal project will be charged for electrical and plumbing inspections.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, further discussion. Hearing that, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Alessio, Briggs.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Okay. Bring his bag, Mr. Williams.
I'll read the minutes carefully in that one.
So the next thing that came up is we've had people wanting to hold for-profit classes on the planes.
See the signature file, I think, or the storage.
I thought we went to great lengths to come up with a fee schedule.
We do, but if, if one of them in particular, I think it's a physical fitness thing of some sort, who wants to do two classes a week on the planes, are we going to charge him? And if it's for profit, it's like fifteen hundred dollars a day, so.
Yeah, for a year.
If you allow that sort of thing, are you going to adjust that schedule? I don't, it doesn't really cover that, I mentioned.
So there's.
There's really only one, I had a.
A jump rope practice, an outdoor workout class.
What's the number of people?
I think the class wasn't specific.
I've got the Girl Scouts of America, I want to use my front lawn as four or five Girl Scouts once a month, I don't even see that as an issue.
Well, that's not a for-profit enterprise.
No, but I'm just saying, so I'm thinking the number of people.
What do they want to use?
They're just going to have their meetings in, they're just going to have a meeting there, they're going to meet on the front lawn, you know.
Uh, this guy has fifteen people, they're a nationally competitive jump rope team.
That one I talked to Paul Butler about, because when I spoke to Rich, he was concerned about it creating a lot of dust in here, um, I talked to Paul.
Oh, they want to use the town hall?
They wanted to be in this meeting room.
In the what, meeting room, what, no.
No.
So, so I talked to Paul, and he was fine with it, he should know who would let them in and lock up.
So I think, I think we should probably talk to our liability carrier.
Downstairs.
Way ahead of you, I had Susan call Primex and see what their thoughts on this were, and that should be in your packets.
Yeah, I.
It's also a fight.
Liability carrier, Primex. That is the follow-on question to every question.
The group I had heard from was that the pollinator, they want to do a seed swap here, but I told them I didn't think we were opening up the town for public use as a local community meetings. The town hall.
Yeah.
I've seen that copy part of it.
I don't have it, what do they say?
Well, I got an email, but they also sent some guidance.
All right, so that person wanted to do fifteen people a class for how many?
Twice a week, isn't that the one?
Fifteen jumpers on the team and several coaches, we would use the town hall for practice, we do speed individual first time, we should practice at the county town hall.
Absolutely.
It's not meeting hall, we can't have them contaminating.
Well, this isn't a gym, either, I mean, this is.
So I don't know what the rec center looks like, would that be suitable over there?
I would think so.
I never been in the center.
And then.
Yeah, we called Paul Butler, see if, if.
Yeah, Paul's concern was who would let him in and out.
Oh, into the rec building, yeah.
So they should follow the protocol of the liability insurance.
Is they Kingston group?
Why can't they, why can't they see the school to use the slaves?
Well, then they need to be directed to go see the school, see if they can rent out the slaves.
Yeah, he said they usually work in school teams, but they've been having trouble finding a place because of, so they're branching out, so they thought.
Recommend we take this under advisement until we research.
No, I think we say no.
We'll say no.
My problem is.
Yeah, and we're not.
They're going in the building, and sweating, everything else, going all over the place, they're not in the key card building.
They're referring us to an article from the Hampshire Municipal, dot org, Town City slash liability involving special events, that's what they want us to look at, format.
I think if we stay consistent, not having special events, other than the old thing in the town hall should be.
Meeting.
Town municipal meetings, done.
At this point, yes.
At this point, with COVID and all the health restrictions that apply.
Just wanted to lose the email, I can have one copy of the email.
Okay, this might fill it up. So they could have a number of different things, and they recommended this for all use of property. Permits.
I showed them the forms we have, one of them apparently doesn't ask for insurance, so I think we just need to kind of combine those forms, so we're always asking for insurance.
Should have satisfactory proof of coverage as a condition on the permit.
I mean, as far as the fees, that's up to us, that's not a safety issue.
Liquor, liquor, liquor is going to involve other things, alcohol?
Yeah, the new form that we use, like, for the ball fields, and asks if they plan to, and if so, then it's a hold under the level.
Depends on what they're doing, what they're having.
All right, so the jump roping in this room is out, obviously, but there's someone else looking to do outdoor workout classes, um, two outdoor workout classes per week starting Wednesday, um, and we'll run the classes from 5:45 PM to 6:45 PM, two nights per week, Wednesday and Friday.
Inside the building?
No, on the plane. So how, how long do they want to do it for?
I'm guessing until it gets dark at 6:45.
So one of the reasons why, I'm not just throwing this out to you, that we stopped people using the planes and football and all that stuff, we started having mosquito issues, mosquito-borne illness, disease issues.
Yeah, and we don't spray the planes.
We don't spray the planes.
Well, it won't be theoretically a factor that time, but, I don't know, football parties go on that, at that time in Como Field.
Right, but I'm just saying that that was a big problem back a few years ago, where we had to do spraying, we couldn't let people use the planes at that time.
So, I, in the past, a commercial event is a, well, this is more of like a workout event, this is like people, you know, doing an activity that would probably be more suited for Como Field or Magason Field.
I wouldn't have problems in the Como Field, and not even bother with that, the planes we have a specific fee structure for, magazines, I don't want them to damage the, you know, field or anything, but of Como, I mean, and I could care less what they do over Como, as long as they're in the core of the field, it doesn't interfere with football.
Do they have, like, a proponent football on the planes?
Oh, a Como. Como Field, they have the junior Indians, so I don't have problems, no fee, it won't cost me anything if they go to Como Field, as long as they're not inhibiting the.
Well, this is a guy running a for-profit enterprise, I think the town should be compensated for having to have someone go out there.
Do we?
Because Paul's going to be running that under his new job description, Paul will be in charge of scheduling that, someone will have to go and.
Yeah, well, I think I said, we didn't set a fee for Como, but I don't, I think you pay something.
Where's he from?
How much, what is the fee, is it twelve hundred?
I think for one day on the planes for an event, for profit, it's fifteen hundred, isn't it? And then it's like a hundred, a hundred twenty-five for Kingston, not for profit.
Well.
So this is a good time for us to take this to revise that fee structure, I think when we took that, when we adopted that, that was a living dog.
One time.
And we knew that, I mean, now we've gotten a directive from Primex, and they had some pointers in there, I think it would be.
Yep.
You look at that, Kevin.
Not getting, oh, I don't think I have that one.
This is their answer when they were asking about things on the planes, but for right now, and the note on here from Branches, you know, he's advocating for them using the rec center to do this, this class as well, where we already have a fee structure in place, and I'm inclined to agree with that, I think we need to, you know, update, that's going to constantly be updated, because there's going to be things that come up that we didn't think about, and it was just as a stopgap, you know, to just at least have something on paper, but with Primex's instructions there, and, you know, what kind of things we're seeing, I mean, these are event, you know, we should, if Como Field is our field, that should be under the facilities use as well.
What's the fee structure for the rec center?
You know, maybe we help Susan if you, if you give us some information on the current fee schedules, the copy of the law from Primex that we just got, and that other one you have here, you have two things.
But wouldn't we let, we wouldn't let Paul open up, because we're worried about COVID.
Yeah, but they're outside, this is outside.
Right, this is outside.
Again, are they, we encourage them to buy stickers if they're Kingston residents and use the bolt launch and use this, now we're going to have every town in the world coming in because they can't use their own town, so I'm opposed to letting outside people at this time use town facilities until this COVID issue is over.
The reason, I'm hesitating more because it's Fremont, and they said their kids are at high school.
I agree.
So if it's related to the school.
But they've got, they've got facilities out there, they've got facilities in Fremont.
I thought it, I wasn't going to say that, it'd be me.
But I'm just, you know, I'm worried about the liability of using, using buildings and stuff, I mean, you know, we've done certain things to use that area just for Kingston residents, putting stickers and locks and so on and so forth.
Right, I can argue with that.
Now we're going to open it up to change the rule we've already made.
Are you talking about the planes or the rec center?
I'm talking about the rec center.
Rec center, Como Field.
Which leads to other things, and I'm not saying these people would do it, but once we open up, you're going to get vandalism, you're going to get other types of things that happen, alarms going off all the time, so, I mean, we've kind of left that area now locked, stickers required, use the beach if you want, if you're a resident, and now we've changed that.
We haven't changed anything yet.
Mine, I'm just throwing it.
So you're saying that's for the, for the jump rope as well, for using the.
Well, the jump rope, we said no.
We said no to the jump rope, we're not going to.
Did I use it?
We don't want them in the rec center either.
Well, it's not our job to find them enough of the venue.
No.
I would say that's a no to all of the town hall.
Just say no.
Say no for the town hall, yeah.
Technically, every time we use, let somebody use this building, we're supposed to come in and clean it out, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, so how much are we paying to do that?
Well, I think in the facilities use plan, we did have a fee in there for one of Rich's guys to come in and unlock it and.
Yeah, that was included.
But. I would say under normal times, that would, that would be good, but.
But that fee structure is set up, you're going to do a dance in here, and someone comes and doesn't want it to be, doing it every other day, it gets all different.
And you have to clean every day.
Right, and even if we said, okay, so no to the planes, no to the rec center, even if you go to Como Field, again, someone's going to leave a water bottle, there's going to be maintenance involved.
I should leave the fee structure alone to set on a case-by-case, at least in the next six months.
Case by case.
Because, because we're not out of COVID country until at least the spring.
And I think another side of this that is coming up next is, you know, the food truck thing that came up, and now has to go to the planning board for review, this would be something that would probably have to be reviewed, because it's an ongoing business that someone is running on our property, and, so.
Absolutely.
I'm inclined to say no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Likewise.
So that was no to the jump rope, no to the physical fitness guy?
Yes.
And, you're not talking about the food truck yet, or are you?
That's next.
Okay. So we have to consider, where's a couple more ones to have a meeting here, so hard to be in there with that.
Yeah, uh, the Lamp lighter Estates annual meeting, uh, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM on the 21st.
They can go to the library, can't they?
Don't they have their own community center?
No.
They never built the community center that much?
I don't.
No, Kingston finds, does, it's not.
I'm, I'm, I'd rather it be clean and simple, town hall will be used for municipal committees only, done.
At this point, yeah.
At this point, because you still have the necessity to keep it clean, disinfected, and all that other good stuff, there's a community room at the library, but there's also a gym at the high school.
Again, not a job to find them a venue, they asked for the town hall.
Right, and say.
So until further notice, town hall is only to be used for municipal purposes?
HTC, heritage, et cetera, et cetera, right, I just think it's too hard to keep track of it.
So what do we want to put on that for a timeline, December 15th?
I would go to March.
When the government lifts, maybe we'll reconsider when the government lifts all the emergency orders. I want to put a date on it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, for their knowledge, because some of them.
We're still at six foot distance, all those things.
Right, it's just too many.
Um, so there is someone doing a fundraising walk for cystic fibrosis research, um. Uh, but this year, the big well organized walks were canceled, along with just about everything else due to coronavirus, so as an alternative this year, the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, I'm skipping to the end here, is supporting virtual walks where teams hold their own informal events wherever they can, we would like to get together with about twenty-five other Team Britain Stevens walkers, not sure of the exact amount, to walk from my dad's house around the plains and her hometown on September 12th, so basically, this is going to be twenty-five people walking around the plains.
I mean, we don't have anything to even say, we can't restrict them from doing that. It's no different than the peaceful protests, you know, they're walking around the plains.
Yeah, we'll just put a note on here that states, please comply with social distancing and mask requirements.
Okay, so they can, as long as they comply with the language requirement.
They sent us a letter that should be in your packets of all their, is this in everybody's packet?
Yeah.
I saw Ellen briefly, and she said that that was going to have to go to the planning board, is that true, or?
Um, I didn't talk to her about that.
Because it's an expansion of an existing building business, is that right?
I don't know.
I didn't, I, I would not have guessed that they had to go to the planning board, but I don't know.
Yeah, I came up when you were talking about it before, they already have court service, but not outside, and the question was whether that's covered under the emergency.
Right, because they're cooking inside the BFW.
I guess as far as we're concerned, this is. I guess as far as we're concerned, this is exactly what they said in the meeting, right? I mean, I think our position, I'm still the same unless anyone has objection with their reading here.
Nope.
So you're okay with that?
Yep. Uh, new business. The capital improvement program for 2020, the select board submissions. I have Susan's done a couple here, upgraded communications technology to include replacement of server and email platform, all town buildings. That's in there, digitization of paper files and all town hall departments, town floor text collector, et cetera. Was that seventy-five? I thought that was like ninety-one thousand.
Yeah, I took out, because there's one, like a double check of the QC, which he said you really don't need that. You know, he included everything and he said, you could take this off, you could take that off. That's the one thing I remember was fairly large amount, so I deducted that.
Is this what we put in by town manager? If that be how we would proceed?
I don't think that would fall into that category.
Same with the code enforcement slash building inspector?
These all seem to be projects.
Yeah, I mean, the capital project would be plant and material items. Can't quote you exactly what they...
Just thinking of a way to start getting it out there a little bit.
So my question is on the third one, Susan?
Yep.
Someone who's more knowledgeable in the voting than I. Is it, so this is for the meeting room, town hall upstairs upgrades to renovate, improve audio, video capability and quality. If, this was already a warrant article that was voted down and we put it in, or is, I was under the impression that means no?
No means no.
You can put it in, it's all in the second half.
You can put it in again.
Yeah, we put in for the...
So this would be in the budget though?
No, no, you can't, you can't put it in the budget, you have to go to the vote, to the voters again.
Yeah. It has to go back to the vote because they did say no in order, so now they have a right to say yes or no again.
Well, they, they regret what they said no to, which is the acoustic tires anyways.
Right, we can have a different project entirely.
Yeah.
But you should, you should put it back out there again, you should put it as a warrant.
I mean, absolutely. We didn't put those tires, but this was...
It's a problem in here, obviously, Bill know that.
Yep.
We get numerous complaints about it weekly.
Yep, and maybe some of those numerous complaints will outvote and get out the way, we need to do this. But it'd be nice to have part of an integrated structure of what we're doing for the town hall and communications. Even if that piece of it has to be voted on, at least we can get the infrastructure as part of the whole package.
Maybe this needs to be more specific about what you're looking for.
Well, you're gonna have that guy come in, we have a group.
I mean, we've already had the sound guy come in, but we need audio or video capability in here with projection.
Yeah.
Do we just, some projection stuff we just don't need to do?
Okay.
Yeah, but that'll work, I say, you can't mount that from there. What he had was a laser thing to go across. That thing, you put on a cart when you need it, you put the screen up and you project the screen, that's all that is.
That's right.
Yeah, the guy that came in was completely different, the whole setup so that you can, the screen could drop down or go up whenever you needed. That thing you go and it'll work.
Kent Walker had a great presentation at the deliberative session on the fire station.
I think we try the freebie first.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, when, when planning board's back in here, then we'll greatly expedite those meetings if everybody's sitting in the audience and see what everybody's looking at.
Yeah, no, we definitely need to have that laptop on a cart and bring it out. That thing was a little bit different, what we're looking at, was incorporating everything, audio, video, that could transmit from whatever is going on to a screen would also go out on YouTube, you know, it was, it was a different thing.
Okay, any other CIP items that need to be captured here?
You mentioned Selectment's office, did you mean an area for Selectment's office?
We don't hear that.
No?
No.
No.
You don't wanna spoil us.
Get one of those stand-up desks and stick it in the...
Got a bunch of them, how many you want?
Five.
And then you know something, the price was right. If we didn't take them, they would throw away.
The price was discount. Oh my goodness.
Well, at some point, the Selectment need an office, but...
Not this year, it's too much.
I don't wanna fall on my sword for. Any comments on this discussion?
Nope, all good.
Okay, committee liaison reports.
I did talk to Richard about clocking on the front stairs because some of it's lifting up and coming out. And I talked to him the other day and he said he had some maintenance schedules and they should be coming around soon before the winter sets in. And I, and I will follow up with that. I was surprised at how much of that has come loose on those stairs.
In a short amount of time.
In a short amount of time.
At the front?
The front stairs, yeah, coming into the front stairs. And Tammy's already been in, they've got a training session coming this Wednesday with, and seasoned election workers to kinda go with procedures because there's, there's more stuff to do than normal. So it will be a busy day, even if it's a slow day in terms of number of ballots. It'll be a learning experience, it'll be a good time to test the new procedures, the COVID procedures, if you will, and train some new volunteers to work. Not volunteers, but, yeah, they have volunteers.
Workers.
So that, she's been busy with that, as has Ellen, as moderator who also wants to, us to remind the public to come in to vote with a mask on. We will have some.
There'll be two entries?
Yeah, yeah.
Say again, there'll be two entries.
They're gonna be coming to the front, some may be directed otherwise, but she wanted to emphasize that people should be, be prepared to wear a mask when they come to vote.
We will have some spare masks there if you forget to bring yours. We're asking that everyone...
Masks will be available, hand sanitizer will be available.
We'll have shields set up for the, for the workers.
Yeah, they'll have masks, yeah, yeah. And it'll be rotating around because the workers will be wearing masks, so we have to get more breaks so they have ability to take a break from the mask. That was it.
Budget committee met on Wednesday. And get involved this year, looking good. But anyways, the question will be back to the board. We're gonna be sending out the packets of the town budgets to do, I believe, this Friday to the Selectment, to Cindy. How do we wanna do, we mentioned about looking at them before they go to budget committee. So how do we wanna plan that? Do we wanna do a workshop?
We might meet with the department heads and if we didn't give them any guidelines or what?
No, exactly, but we could still, there's still time, I mean, it's...
That's, I think that...
Did the two percent rule go up?
I'm thinking we should have that meeting with them first before they generate the budget so they have some ideas of what we're gonna be looking for. Because you're right, they didn't have any guidance.
No.
As to what the board and what we're gonna allow and what, what types of things we wanna see in the budget, what we don't expect. There's a lot of questions out there, so I would recommend we have a meeting with the department heads.
Before Friday?
Well, let's kick, let's kick the deadline out a week or two.
The budget committee won't be working till October, November, okay? Our deadline is set that it's supposed to be the end, that's our deadline.
There's a lot of unanswered questions.
So do we wanna pick a date, we wanna do one day, have it, do we wanna in, do we wanna do them individually?
What about, if we're back on an every week schedule, why not have then a meeting beforehand? With the, so a different department head each week?
Are we going back to a weekly meeting?
Starting the fourteenth.
Didn't know that, fourteenth of September?
Yes.
So do we, do we have enough time to do one a meeting or do we want to... We also, we talked about going, having one of our meetings during the day to have staff come as well. Is that, is that too convincing? You wanna say to the Monday, I'm just asking.
I would prefer for it to keep it out of the day, but whatever works for the board, I'll try and be there.
I was, I was thinking more for the convenience of the staff, I would not put you to meet with them.
I would suggest the first meeting that we have, that we ask them all, can those questions can get answered? There's a lot of unanswered questions prior to generating their budget, so everybody's, everybody's following those same rules of what's expected.
Yeah, yeah. Our first meeting now, and our next meeting is the fourteenth, and then we meet every week thereafter.
I give you examples, so they're asking, you know, there were some comments that were made by the board and there's some uncertainty on pay, pay raises, pay for performance and all of that. We talked about having that put in the budget. So what does that mean? Does that mean our budget, does it mean their budget, and we approve? So there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Right, right.
And now, at the end of the, end of the day, everybody's gonna be doing something different because they don't have that guidance, which we need to be giving them that guidance. Mike, Mike.
Hey, I would think we should probably do a workshop. Our department heads pick one day, at least, at least talk to them what we're looking for.
Yep.
To give them the guidance, to get, to answer their question then, and once they craft their budget, then they can come in. We could do a couple a week or try and do a couple of weeks.
Because I'm sure they're already been working on it.
We have.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, I mean, when it comes down to the highway, police, fire, but other than that, planning board, it's, it is what it is. HDC is what it is, conservation, but just give them some guidelines.
Yeah. Okay.
So do we wanna pick a date or what are we gonna do?
Well, do we have a lot coming in for the fourteenth, would that be too much on a, on a Monday night, for example? Or do you wanna do like a Wednesday late afternoon? Or in the morning? Eight o'clock in the morning?
I think, I think it would be best, just at least to meet with them, tell them what we're looking for.
How long of a meeting are we planning this being?
I think an hour, I think if we all got them all in there, told them what our expectations are and then answered their questions, I think it would be done.
Do we wanna do a Zoom?
You could do that.
That would be better.
I mean, they're, they just wanna be able to ask questions and everybody's getting the same answer.
If you plan an hour, do an evening?
If we give enough time, whether it's the chair, the vice chair, they can assign someone to be there, you know?
I think Zoom works because it's just to answer those questions and give some guidance.
Yeah.
Well, where we can, if it's a question we don't know the answer to, we'll have that separate meeting to determine where we're at, but yeah. If we can keep it to an hour, then let's get it scheduled.
So what do, let's pick a day? I'm on your schedule, I, I think we're all flexible. What accommodates you the best, a day and time?
Let's do the eighth of September.
You know, I want you to tell Ellen and Tammy. Because that's gonna be me.
You wanna do noon on the ninth? Works for me, nine, nine, noon time.
Uh, close, okay?
You won't be sleeping, don't worry.
Sure, you're having a nice work.
Okay, so you want me to invite, make sure I get everybody, anyone that's got a budget?
Yep.
Anyone that's gotta come to budget committee, right?
There's a whole list of people, but... Well, all right, do we... Yeah, I might as well, HDC may not have much of a budget, we don't know what they're gonna have.
But they may have a question.
Well, let's make it mandatory for department heads. And any, anyone who presents to the budget committee can come with any questions that they have.
How's that, that's good, that's a good way to do it.
Works for me, nine, nine, noon time.
Hey, we should have Cindy on it too.
Yep.
Um, you probably, when you send out the letter, maybe have, send out with the letter saying we're doing that, that, you know, talk to Cindy, budget's on, because I think they do Friday. So we say, yeah.
You should do that tomorrow so that people know that the budget deadline has been extended to accommodate this.
Yeah.
Two weeks, when you give them a two week deadline, the extension?
Yeah.
How does that sound? Because we're gonna be the final week anyway, so, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything for you, Donna, committee reports?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, Kevin, did you have?
That was it, yes, okay.
Conservation walk, we did the conservation walk on that trail and bridge and all of that on Ball Road last Wednesday. Walked with some of the people from conservation, were able to meet with the owners, had a great meeting and were able to resolve some of the issues there.
Excellent.
Public comment?
Phil, can I go back? Seeing we're meeting with, do we want to invite, Chakhar is the head of the budget committee. Do you wanna offer him to talk to, be in on that Zoom as well?
Sure.
Okay.
He's doing a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Organizing this, converting.
Yeah, he's done a phenomenal job. The fact that they actually have a secretary now taking minutes is incredible.
So going around is the election notices, two copies for each election. And I only signed one?
Yeah. This one you gotta sign too. And this one you get sent over to chief. Top one goes on the page.
And just to reiterate, masks are requested for the...
Required.
Required. For the election. They will be provided, hand sanitizer is available, so please take note of that. We covered the facilities use requests. And we have a application for disabled veterans' tax credit. That's this one, with all the sticky notes on it, Susan? Couple of them, I guess.
Was it the exemption? There's one for a disabled veteran?
One for veteran.
Veteran. I did have a question on the disabled, whether you'll accept that letter. I reached out to DRA, they're looking in certain language. I'm inclined to back to veteran and ask them to get that letter from the PA, I think is where it comes from. Good, put that on the sticky note.
Well, this one's wrong anyway.
Which, which one?
This one.
What's wrong with that?
I yelled his name out. I can tell you why.
Okay.
Said he served for an allied country in the US Army.
I don't know, I don't know.
I don't think that's right. But this other one's good to go.
Yes, that one's fine, this, this one is just a question of, they have to write paperwork to get that extra.
It's two places in each page. For me?
Okay, that was a paper about the...
It's almost as bad as the Calpani case.
Facilities use, but I, I got a bunch of copies, and all we need to have.
All right, so we have the veterans' tax credit figured out.
Ms. Ex-Moderator, should I sign this if I'm going to have someone in my place or not?
Yeah, you can sign it, it's, you're still performing your duties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Even if you have a, a select and pro temp for the day to help out.
Yep.
That's a different issue, but you should sign that on behalf of them.
So for Eileen, this is just a reappointment that we're signing?
Yeah, she's already an alternate, she's become a full member to fill a spot, so...
She doesn't need to come in? So this is for Eileen Clifford, who is moving from alternate to full Heritage Commission member, so want to thank her for her volunteerism. Also want to thank Debbie Powers, who was the first chair of the Heritage Commission. Seven years she served in that capacity, and is finishing up, and congratulations to Ernie Landry, who is the new chair of the Heritage Commission.
I would just like to add that the Heritage Commission is under good hands with all those people and all the people that are on there.
Well, Debbie has led the charge in a number of initiatives, she, she chaired Division Kings in Two, she helped get, hopefully get the signs out of Welcome to Kingston one of these days. She's been, she's been advised as chairman of the Heritage Commission, she's going to stay on as vice chair, it's not like she's going away, but, but needed, needed some help. Ernie's been a good guy to do that, and they work well together, and I'm sure they will
Couple of land use change taxes here.
It should be, they're good.
Feel free to check them.
We're just looking at those today because Cindy needs to estimate through the end of the year what she's going to be getting. And that one Marshall Road property split up recently, and lots have been sold, so we're trying to figure out which ones, we should be taking the current lease off if
Now, we just signed that one again? Or wasn't he at last week?
Okay. I thought we signed that, though we signed it already.
Well, I did, we received another letter of complaint regarding the music coming from Sadler's Moon. Have we heard from Attorney Crumlin regarding that?
No, I sent, after the last meeting, I, I sent both letters we already had, and I sent that to him, and he didn't update.
Can I see that one?
Please. Should we send copies of these to the governor?
Yes, that would be nice.
It's his order, he might as well deal with the complaints.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the other side, please, thank you.
While you're reading that, Kevin, we have a letter from Health Trust. Apparently, there's a surplus that will be distributed back to the employees who paid into that.
Yeah, I think this happens, you know, you're not sure, but she's just got the letter, Cindy, this is free information that they have this surplus, and then in October we'll know what our portion is to be distributed.
Uh, this is a letter from Xfinity, I'll just read it aloud since it affects most of the residents, since they have no other choice. Your chairman and members of the board, we are committed to keeping you and our customers informed of changes to Xfinity TV services. Accordingly, please note the following changes which will occur on August 25th, 2020 to the Xfinity lineup provided to your community. Cooking HD is a bunch of channels, will be added to entertainment and expanded basics. They're adding channels. Also want to make sure we're aware that podcasts continues to make it easier for low-income families to connect to the internet through Internet Essentials. New Internet Essentials customers will receive two free months of internet service if they enroll in the program by December 3rd, 2020. Additional information can be found at internetessentials.com. Should you or any of your community's, community partners like to discuss the Internet Essentials program in more detail, please do not hesitate to contact. More channels.
That's what we need.
Send the letter notice with the PAA.
We really, we really send it out to ourselves?
If the person, I hesitate every time, but if the person pays for that letter, I guess I've got it.
That's true, that is true.
You're going to open your letter?
That was the number?
No. I wrote the one, so I'm not sure what you noticed, is this the chair, or the other
Okay, this is a...
Oh, it's going to be the, the new one. Does the other one need to say?
It's a public, doesn't say what it is.
Sure.
Doesn't say, regard to. For Barry and Gail Phillips of Elliot, Maine, it's a public hearing whereby the FNC can variance from the terms of Article 301.1 of the Town of Kingston zoning ordinance and ask that terms be waived to construct a single-family house on the farm.
Yeah, and it's not a class six road.
Has anything changed since the last time they were before the board?
No.
What, so why are they doing it before the board?
What do you mean it's not a class six road?
It's not a road that you could, the state prohibits us from, I would put permits on roads that are not class five or better.
Five, okay. So it is a class six road?
Yes, and they've been told...
So, yeah, from pavement forward, from, from, no?
I don't know if I have it, I can't remember right now.
Yeah, so I think it's class five all the way from Little River all the way to the end of pavement, and then from Dirt, Dirt Arms?
Yeah, I don't have the allocation, so I don't know exactly what it was, but it was Article 301, one is the one about building permits being allowed on a, on a class...
Five.
Class five road, correct.
The last one that went in was about 20 years ago, on the, on the left-hand side.
I think the state has regulations that probably...
Even notified, if you want to attend.
Uh, the DES, it's a very timely notification letting us know that there's drought. Sent up Thursday, right before we got eight inches of rain.
Okay.
Always helpful for those folks.
Well, treat family, you know?
Yeah, well, when they build us, for their help. What's the tree farm thing, do we need to sign this?
No, that's, um, I just came today, it's got to be put in the file, they have to notify the town, every six years, whatever that is, they have to be certified, whatever, through the state, they get that letter. It's going to the property file for being...
Okay, so I'll throw it away.
Put it in the circular file.
Don't think about going back to everything, if we cut down a little, come out.
What's that?
Maybe when we get back to everything, we won't have quite so much paper junk.
Are you going to write on those now? All the facilities use applications, are you going to write now on there?
Um, yeah, I have copies, yeah.
Get your red pen.
So, sorry.
I've got it now, if you decide to...
Uh, the Exeter Swampscott River Local Advisory Committee, E.B. Nathan is no longer a member, we thank her for her service, but they need two additional individuals interested in serving on the committee.
Can we appoint Elizabeth Mello?
We want to replace her.
Elizabeth Mello.
Right.
We appointed her.
I don't really want to, more, I'm not sure, I think that's up to...
We actually have one little, small piece of that, right?
I think it's the Little River.
Little River, just that, just that feat, yeah.
How often these guys meet?
Elizabeth Mello sits on.
I have thoughts.
We could appoint you, it can be arranged.
I made a motion to authorize...
And you don't have a second.
So we need volunteers, if anyone's interested, please contact the Conservation Commission, they can give you more information on that, and we can appoint you. That deals with all things Exeter Swampscott River.
True, Terry's there on it.
I think that's everything.
I think so.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2020, public and non-public.
A motion and a second for the discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Riz?
Yes.
Booms?
Yes.
PJs?
Yes.
Okay. That will conclude this evening's public session, we have some employee evaluations to complete in a non-public session.